Alive.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's ordinary council meeting. I declare the meeting start to start at five thirty P M. You all have the council meeting agenda in front of you. I'll start with item number one, acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two is privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. Item number three, governance principles. This is an addition to our format, to the agenda format. So I'll read this one out for today. Council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda give effect to the overarching government's principles stated in section nine two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are as follows. Number one, council decisions are to be made and actions taken in accordance with the relevant law. Number two, priority is to be given to achieving the best outcomes for the municipal community, including future generations. Number three, the municipal community is to be engaged in strategic planning and strategic decision making. Number four, innovation and continuous improvement is to be pursued. Number five, collaboration with other councils and governments and statutory bodies is to be sought. Number six, the ongoing financial viability of the council is to be ensured. Number seven, regional, state, and national plans and policies are to be taken into account in strategic planning and decision making. And number eight, the transparency of council decisions, actions, and information is to be ensured. Moving on to page number seven, item number four, apologies, councillors, do we have an apology today? Councillor Les Orasvare? Yes, Denny Adam, councillor Denny Adam? Could you please unmute yourself, councillor?
I thought our governance team was doing that, but yes, I'd just like to note the apology of councillor Les Orasvare.
Thank you. We go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Item number five is declarations of conflict of interest. Councillors, is there any declaration of conflict of interest today with respect to the agenda items? Neil, thank you. We'll move on to item number six, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Is any item of the meeting minutes needed, needs a discussion? If not, then there's a recommendation on page seven about the minutes of the meeting. Could someone please move a motion? Councillor Keem, okay? Could you please unmute?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to move the recommendation that minutes of the sixteenth of June twenty twenty council meeting as circulated be confirmed.
Thank you. And do you have a second up? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Sutton, you will have to unmute yourself and apologies, I think there's some, yeah, our governance team is not able to do it remotely, so please you'll have to unmute yourselves.
Yes, I agree. I second that motion.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the vote. Okay, I'm disorganising myself. Are those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Item seven is public question time. Mr. Harriet, do we have any public questions today?
No.
We're going to see. Okay. We'll now move on to page number eight of our agenda. Eight point one, item eight point one is about Greater Shepparton best start early years plan twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. There's a recommendation on page eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd be more than happy to move this motion that the council, one, endorsed the draft she, draft Greater Shepparton best start early years plan twenty twenty, twenty twenty five for exhibition, and two, place the plan on public exhibition for a period of four weeks commencing twenty second of July twenty twenty and concluding nineteenth of August twenty twenty for final community consultation.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Do I have a second? Councillor Keem?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm happy to second that recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. This group does do amazing work and have done amazing work for many, many, many years now. The environmental, social, and economic impact is huge, and invest, as we all know, investment in early childhood is critical, as it says in the report. So we are a highly disadvantaged population in some areas, and the way forward is to break the cycle of disadvantage through early childhood learning. So that's backed by evidence, and we're putting that in practice. We've had some gains, like an increase in breastfeeding and better language skills moving forward with better kindergarten attendance and things like that. Healthy, happy, well-adjusted children generally become healthy, happy, well-adjusted adults. So that's what we want to see, best outcomes for the next generation, because that will benefit everyone through every stage of life. Perhaps, perhaps we need more consideration of the diversity of family groups. We're still calling, calling one department the maternal child, child and health, when that kind of excludes quite a fair bit of paternal and all the rest of it, so we might need to be a bit cautious of our language moving forward. But it's a terrific, terrific organisation, what they do, and also a good advocacy platform for a parent baby centre at GB Health, because we have all the data, the statistics support the fact that we need more help in this area to break that this cycle of disadvantage, and if we get it right, that can be applied over other municipalities. So I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor Keem, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, look, it's great to think that we've got these works all put together, and it has been a collaborative approach. There's been lots of other people involved in this, as well as now going out to public consultation, which is extremely important, for four weeks to get some feedback. But it's great to think we've had the best start early years partnerships, specific work groups, service providers, and extensive research. So it's a community effort. It'll be a moving beast. I think there's always things that do, you know, improve along the way. But it's great, you know, it's a very, very important space, and it's something that council obviously needs to be invested and involved in, and we are. And it's, yeah, they're the most important years, I believe, of a child's development. So great to have this. It's great work, and well done to everyone that's actually been involved in putting this one together.
Thank you, councillor Keem. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Is it unmuted? Yes. Just a few words. I just want to acknowledge the team behind the best start early years, because I know how much work they do, and they really need to be congratulated on what they've achieved over the past few years. The maternal child health, birth to six years, they've increased home visits, they've increased lots of different areas in there, in that space. So I think they have done a wonderful job, and they continue to do that. And this plan will just keep going for another six years, and hopefully we'll get better outcomes over that time.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I support the other councillors, what they've said, they're spot on. Thank you. They're spot on what they're saying. The research is showing that the first two years is so incredibly important to a child's development, and that's what this is concentrating on. And it is important that we continue to put resources into it, which I'm sure council will continue to do. As I said, support the other councillors they're saying, and research is, is showing, this is exactly what we're going to do.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item number nine point one on page fourteen, governance rules and public transparency policy. There's a recommendation on page fourteen. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Hazeman?
Thank you, madam mayor. And I think it's appropriate that I read the entire motion. Those that, people who might be watching at home will wonder what on earth we're talking about if I don't. I will move that the council, one, receives the draft governance rules, including the incorporated election period policy developed under section sixty of the Local Government Act twenty twenty, two, receives the draft public transparency policy developed under section fifty eight of the Local Government Act twenty twenty, three, in accordance with section sixty dash four of the Local Government Act twenty twenty, endorses the following processes of community engagement with respect to the development of the draft governance rules and draft public transparency policy. Three point one, publication of a notice on council's website and social media sites which invites submissions from members of the public in respect of the draft governance rules and draft public transparency policy within fourteen days from the date of publication of the notice. Three point two, give consideration of all submissions received. Four, authorizes the chief executive officers to take such steps as are necessary to give effect to this resolution. And five, considers the adoption of the governance rules and public transparency policy at the eighteenth of August twenty twenty council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yes, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Only, only a few words, madam mayor, because effectively, we're putting a couple of documents out for public consultation, and the time to debate the pros and cons of these is at the August council meeting. But the reason why we are putting it out and have developed these documents is that it's a requirement under the Local Government Act twenty twenty, to implement a suite of new documents by the first of September twenty twenty, two of which are these documents that we're putting out for public consultation.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, thank you, madam mayor. Just to add to councillor Hazeman's commentary there, just quickly, again, for the benefit of the, if there is any viewing public out there, that the governance rules, section sixty of Local Government Act twenty twenty provides for councils to adopt and apply governance rules that consist of the following. And these five or six categories are what would no doubt have some minor changes potentially, and they are, and they're very, very important. The conduct of meetings of council and delegated committees, the form and availability of meeting records, the election of the mayor and deputy mayor, the appointment of an acting mayor, the election period policy, the procedure for the disclosure of a conflict of interest by a councillor or delegated committee member, and the disclosure of a conflict of interest by a member of council staff and providing advice to councils. So these are some of the sections of this new governance rules that will be potentially tinkered with. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
In the interest of expediency and process, in fact, we have to do this by September, I will support it. There's a few items in this agenda that don't have my full support. We've gone through them with a fine-tooth comb and ironing out a few things and getting there. But this is just a draft going out in public consultation. There's still room for discussion, and we can address that at the next meeting. So I'll support it.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right, councillor Summer. So would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Yeah. Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item number nine point two on page eighteen, local law number two, conduct at meetings and common seal. There's a recommendation on page eighteen. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Keem?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd happy to move that recommendation as a motion on page eighteen, local law number two, conduct at meetings and common seal. Again, I will read it out. We do have people listening that haven't got an agenda in front of them. It's quite long. The recommendation is that the council, number one, receives the proposed local law number two, conduct at meetings and common seal proposed local law. Number two gives notice in accordance with sections one nineteen slash one and two twenty three of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty nine in the Victorian Government Gazette and in newspapers circulating generally in councils, municipal district. Two point one stating the purpose and general purport of the proposed local law. Two point two stating that a copy of the proposed local law can be obtained from council's website and from council's offices. And two point three inviting submissions in accordance with section two two three of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty nine within twenty eight days from the date of publication of the notice. And two point four stating that a person making a submission is entitled to request to be heard in support of their submission. Item three considers all submissions and hears from any submitters wishing to be heard at a future council meeting. Number four authorizes the chief executive officer to take such steps as are necessary to give effect to this resolution. And finally, number five, consider making the proposed local law at the fifteenth of September twenty twenty council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Keem. Do I have a second? Councillor Sutton?
I'm happy to accept that, that motion, or that recommendation as a motion, madam mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Keem? Do you want to speak to the motion?
I think you, madam mayor, very similar to the previous recommendation and previous motion. It's in accordance with the new requirements under Local Government Act twenty twenty, the council is required to adopt a new set of governance rules by September first twenty twenty. The proposal local law is being presented, as we said, in draft format for public consultation for a period of twenty eight days. So in accordance with section two two three of the Local Government Act, we certainly look forward to any feedback that we might have on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Keem. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd just to say that anybody in the public who is interested in it, they could give in submissions, and we can have a look at those and come back to the next meeting with this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good. Now, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you. Similar to the last one, there are a few things that I'm not a hundred percent sold on, on this one and the next one. But we're still having discussions. I think it's a bit of a shame we're doing this right at the end of the council term, because this should be a discussion that involves all the new councillors going into the next council term. This is where they have an opportunity to get some more control back from the organisation, lead a bit stronger, put some things in place that aren't quite as restrictive. But it is what it is. So one example of something I'm not a hundred percent sold on would be the definition. There seems to be a bit of confusion around when a motion is a motion, notice of motions, when you put them up. Apparently, it's an official note, it's an official motion, even though it hasn't got a mover and a second up, which I find quite strange, because it's not a motion until it's moved, and it should be treated like we treat any recommendation and have the opportunity for a word to be changed here and there, so long as the intent of the recommendation or the notice of motion remains the same. But for some reason, we've made that quite prescriptive, and this is an opportunity to loosen that a little, because it does seem unnecessary. Because we'd have to get a mover and a seconder to make an amendment to whether something should say and or or, which to me makes no sense. But, you know, in the interest of transparency, we can have these discussions through the draft stage. People can make submissions. We'll continue with our email debates and hopefully get a version that everybody's content with, with a degree. But that's democracy. So I'll support it for the interest of debate.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Mr. Harriet, would you like to clarify about the timeline councillor Summer has identified, that it would be, it would have been preferred to have it for the next term, rather than, I thought there was some timeline.
In relation to the provisions of the new act.
Of the new act.
Which we need to comply with.
And it's by September.
Yep.
So councillor Summer, the reason that we are doing it now is because we have to comply with the timeline that has been set, and it has to be September.
And that was not in question. It's just a shame that it has to be this way.
Okay, thank you. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? No. So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. All right, so next is item nine point three, instrument of delegation members of staff and development hearings panel. There's a recommendation on page twenty one. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, madam mayor. Did you want me to read it out?
Do you?
Really? It's an instrument of delegation. I'll move it as written on page twenty one.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councillor?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. We seem to be doing a lot of these recently, and I'm hoping that this version will offer some stability, so we don't have to keep going back and doing more of these. It's basically just, council can't operate unless we delegate to the CEO. So the CEO then has to delegate to the rest of staff, because obviously, if we did everything, we'd be in meetings from dusk till dawn every single day. So the only way it can function is by having this document, and it's quite substantial. It does put that question mark around operational versus strategic systems within the council. We're often told that we shouldn't be involved in operational procedures, but the fact is that this document does require a councillor resolution, and that indicates that the lines are probably a bit more blurred than we take for granted. What happens operationally, we still have liability for as councillors. And there's nothing in the act that says that we can't be involved in operations. Yes, that's the CEO's primary purpose, but that doesn't exclude us from doing these things. So, yeah, look, it's something we have to do. It's a bit of housekeeping again, but hopefully this will be the last document for a while.
Sorry, badam mayor, were you asking me to speak? Madam mayor? Hello, can you hear me? I can't hear anyone. Sorry, madam mayor, if you hear me, please raise your hand, so I can begin speaking. There you go. Thank you. I just want to add quickly to councillor Summer's comments. This is basically a procedural motion that needs to be done, but to give you a little bit of context, the instrument of delegation to members of staff and development hearings panel was at last adopted by this council on twenty first of April twenty twenty. So this additional review has been prompted by an internal restructure within the community director whereby position titles have changed and been amended. So this update to the instrument of delegation is essential to ensure these officers continue to be authorized with the appropriate powers, duties, and functions to perform their roles effectively. That's straight out of the executive summary, but just to make it clear to everyone why this is happening. I hope you heard that, because I can't hear anything coming back to me. Thank you.
Yes, we heard you, and thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. All right, so would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item nine point four on page twenty five, contracts awarded under delegation report. There's a recommendation on page twenty five. Would any councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page twenty five, motion that the council note contracts awarded under delegated authority by the CEO and requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you, councillor Jovanati. Do I have a second? Councillor Sutton?
I'm happy to move that, that, second that motion, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Again, as I've said on many occasions in the past, I think it's, it's important that members of the public are advised as to what some of the works that are going on around the municipality are. This is something the CEO does. He doesn't have to advise everybody, because it is under his delegated powers, but he does it every month. And this month, we can see that we've got a contract awarded to Mandalay Technologies for the provision of waste operation software, and also a contract award to Morrison's Construction for the, for the construction of the Catanga West Basin Station upgrade. And there's probably another half a dozen or more requests for tenders that are currently out and waiting completion.
Thank you, councillor Jovanati. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Keem?
I think you, madam mayor, just to note, obviously, we do have some tendering out at the moment that, you know, possibly will be impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic that we're facing at the moment. Obviously, the event management of Fryer Street Food Festival, there'll be some, you know, some, obviously, some changes along the way. But obviously, council still supports, you know, economic development within our community. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how, what we can achieve and what we need to obviously, you know, change and moving forward, what that means. We all don't know yet. But obviously, there's some things in there that may not be going ahead. One thing I'm very pleased about is obviously the detail just as part pavilion. That'll be something that's very, very exciting for the community. And there's some other projects in there. Maybe, as we talked about, the pool, getting that retail, keeping our facilities of high standard is very important, particularly our ones that are, you know, physical, people using physical activity and swimming and outdoor exercising, all those type of things. So obviously, there's a cost to that. But they're very important that we continue to do so.
Thank you, councillor Keem. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? I think I saw some hands before. Yeah, councillor Summer?
Just in support of what councillor Keem was saying about the COVID changes, perhaps it would be prudent to have some kind of subtext underneath anything that might be impacted by COVID, just to give us an explanation on how that's going to proceed, Fryer Street Food Festival being one. It's a shame, but we probably would be quite irresponsible to go ahead with something like that. So what's going to happen? And these things take time. They've probably been in the pipeline a long time, and it's gone through the process. It's ended up in the agenda. But as we know, things change every day. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of subtext around them.
Would you like to add some comments now?
Clarification around that, madam mayor? The Fryer Street contract does actually have provision for COVID nineteen, three-year contract, and the initial year at least, there's plenty of warning or commentary there about the restrictions that may be in place for the next six to twelve months. So those items and matters are built into the relevant contracts.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, so in that case, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. With that, we now move on to our next agenda, item nine point five, procurement policy review, this recommendation on page twenty eight, would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move the council dot version six of procurement policy thirteen policy one, L one, thank you.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just, just quickly, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is our procurement policy, it needs to be updated every twelve months and it's been assessed and decided that it's correct the one we've got, so we'll ticken that off as being assessed again. We can move on.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just to quickly add to councillor Patterson's commentary, which is correct, we will be changing this though, I think by July twenty twenty one, the current one will still exist until that point, I think by the end of twenty twenty one, we will be adopting another one, a new one, new version.
Thank you, councillor Adam, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I am in favour of this, this motion because we obviously do have to have a procurement policy, but I've got to say that during my time on council, I have been critical of limitations of our procurement policies, often wonder if we're getting the best bang for our buck. I know as councillors, we express frustrations on occasions that we only have two or three tenders for some of our advertised contracts, which often amount to some very large dollars involved. Often the reason being is that the process to register as council, as a council tenderer is difficult for many smaller to medium sized businesses to complete. When I stood for council initially, I wanted to cut the red tape at council, early on I thought we'd achieve good outcomes with the planning application timeframes that were reduced, but the longer I'm on council, the more red tape is being introduced. Now, this is not the fault of the offices, as much of it is directed from the state government, often divesting themselves of their responsibilities on the council with no additional recompense to offset the costs. I often wonder if we're all not over legislating ourselves to ensure we don't copper kicking from one direction or another. I've worked with state and federal governments for forty years now and I have to say that I've never seen the level of bureaucracy that local government has in working with any of those other government departments. But as I say, I support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, now we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried and opposed, thank you. Moving on to item number nine point six, temporary extension of terms of Shepherd and Shoney committee members, this recommendation on page thirty one. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation as a motion on page thirty one, that the council approve the extension to the term of the following Shepherd and Shoney industry representatives until the thirtieth of September twenty twenty, that includes Shane Saly, John Main Tegner and Stephen Snyder.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Do I have a second? Councillor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, there's some changes within the local government act as of September the first twenty twenty, section eighty six committees of council such as Shepherd and Shoney will no longer exist in their current format. In light of this, the purpose, structure and governance of Shepherd and Shoney, including the committees, required to be reviewed, so it is anticipated that the transition to any new format needs to be, sorry, needs to commence on the first of August twenty twenty, so it's just bringing them up to that transition period in time to fill the gap until we see what that means with the new changes within the committees.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Could you please unmute yourself?
Yes, I was, I was warming up my mouth, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Just to add to councillor O'Keefe's commentary, look, it doesn't make practical sense to go through a process of putting new members on that committee when in fact, as councillor O'Keefe said, the whole structure will change in August anyway, so it's just a practical response to that change.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, now we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried and opposed, thank you. Next is item ten point one, Shepherd and Shone Grounds Advisory Committee, Terms of Reference, this recommendation on page thirty three, would councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move that the council adopt the terms of reference for the Shepherd and Shone Grounds Advisory Committee.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Councillor Patterson?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, it's very, very straightforward, there's a requirement that the, the terms of reference for the committee are reviewed every two years, that's been undertaken, no changes to the document has resulted, so it's very much business as usual.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, councillor Hazelman, I'm nailed it, Mark.
Okay, thank you, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Councillor Hazelman, I didn't see your hands, are you in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried and opposed. Item ten point two, on page thirty six, Taturra Park Advisory Committee, Terms of Reference, this recommendation on page thirty six, would a councillor please move a motion? Thank you, councillor Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would like to move the recommendation as a motion, that the council adopt the terms of reference for the Taturra Park Advisory Committee.
Thank you, and a second? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Thanks, councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute, councillor Adam?
Sorry, councillor, sorry, Madam Mayor, yeah, look, the terms of reference haven't changed since the previous review, so they will remain the same. Just as a reminder to the public and to the councils, the role of this committee is to provide feedback and advice for future planning and capital works and represent the feedback in interest of the user groups, the committee should hold at least four meetings at the Taturra Park complex during the year on such dates determined by the committee and that's basically business as usual, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it was probably a bit remiss of me for the last motion as well, congratulations to the committee because I do sit on both those committees, they're a great group of people, they're, they should be very proud in what they've achieved in maintaining and restoring, it's a very competitive regional facility out at Tat Park, as we all know, it's referred to as the jewel of the crown in Taturra, they're a passionate group, great intentions, they're great, good to deal with, they've got attention to detail and good safety foresight, so, yeah, I'm really impressed with them. Recently renaming the outdoor arena to the Kevin Gunner Ryan Arena, that was the initiative of the Tat group, so longstanding councillor Gunner Ryan, who had been a councillor since he was twenty four, I think, yeah, you're probably sick of me telling that story, but I do think it's pretty amazing and obviously so does Taturra, so I'm more than happy to support the terms of reference that, yeah, we need volunteers.
Thank you, thanks councillor Summer, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson? You're on mute, councillor Patterson, please. Yes, that's, that's better?
I'd just like to correct councillor Summer, if we don't, we'll all be in trouble, but councillor Kevin Gunner Ryan Chek has A O in the wording too, if we don't put that in, we'll be in really big trouble.
Thank you, councillor Patterson, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Alright, now we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Next is our item number ten point three, single use plastic free council run events policy twenty twenty, this recommendation on page thirty nine, would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page thirty nine, states that the council adopt the single use plastic free council run events policy.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe?
I think you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, I did have quite a few things I was going to say on this particular item, but I, I will taper it down somewhat, but this motion, in my opinion, is a very important one, as well as a council, need to set the example for our community to follow when it comes to single use plastic items. When I walk around Shepherd and it staggers me the amount of single use disposal products that are just dumped out of car windows by some of our regular celebrities here in Shepherd and, the number of our fast food wrappers, containers and plastic bottles left on the roadside, it really is a disgrace. It's almost impossible to catch the culprit, so as, wherever we can, where we can reduce the use of single use items, I think is mandatory. I was always, sorry, I was going to add something along the lines, I hope we never ban condoms for these people because we don't need them to breathe more than they have to, but that would be offensive to some people and I would never say that.
Is that all, councillor Jovanetti? Thank you, councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I lost a bit of concentration there, but I'll get back on track, this is a very responsible thing we need to be doing, a very responsible policy, we certainly, everyone knows the impact of plastics on our environment, so I think, you know, this is a great thing that we need to do, our events, you know, prior COVID and post recovery of COVID are growing every single year, I know council is running an incredible amount of community events and out of those events, we encourage water, we encourage lots of things at those events, so, you know, I think we certainly are taking a very strong, you know, lead and responsibility for the things that we are involved in and also promoting community to feel the same way about it, so it's a strong message, it's great to think that we also followed the lead of another council that also had put this in place, I'm just trying to find exactly which one it was here, but they'd already had this in place and it's helped us set up this a lot better, so well done, and I think it's something that across the community, these conversations need to continue, we know the impact, we know that plastics don't go away, they literally just stay around for hundreds of years and just take up space, so, you know, it's a great policy and something that we all continue to learn from and hopefully educate the community on as well.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion, for the motion? Councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to be clear, so again, the viewing probably understand what this policy has in its content, it outlines council's commitment to eliminate single use plastics, plastic bags, eliminate single use plastic plates, bowls, cups, straws, cutlery and takeaway food containers, reduce bottled water and provide alternative free access to water, avoid plastic packaging, eliminate balloons at events, reuse event materials if possible and educating diet event staff and audience on single use plastic free practices, so it's a practical policy, there's different actions there that people would be directed towards doing and I think if everyone follows those rules, we'll go a long way to reducing the, the plastic menace that's out there in our community.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd like to support what most of the councillors have said, or pretty well all of what the councillors said, there's, we should be just reminded, this is a council run events only at this stage, it is not widespread across the community, hopefully one day it might be. The only concern I have about the whole list of items, which is all plastics, is water, I think it's imperative that we have water available at events which we are allowing for, how it happens, I'm not sure, I just think we might have to, you know, give it twelve months to just see if the water side is working correctly, because it's very important in our events we have during hot summer days, people get as much water to drink as they want to and if we're going to restrict it because of this, I don't think, so I've got a way to go, but we certainly give it twelve months and see how it's going.
Thank you, councillor Patterson, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Any other comments? Yes, councillor Summer?
Yeah, it's a green policy, but even if you don't believe in climate change, I think we can all agree that less pollution is a good thing, so plastics are made to last forever, as councillor O'Keefe said, that they don't go away, we need to be more aware of where these things might end up, in wild animals and, you know, waterways, clogging of drains, we have such a disposable culture these days, we just don't think about where it goes when it, after it hits the bin or gets chucked in a river, so that needs to change, so if we're more careful from the top, hopefully that will filter down in terms of culture to the grassroots, people will follow our example. Now, they've said that it's a cost neutral type of implementation, which I find amazing because I always thought that alternatives to plastics were quite dear, but apparently not, biodegradable is on path in sustainability and in financial impact, so it's a no brainer about whether or not we should do it, so yes.
Thank you, councillor Summer, alright, does anyone else want to speak to the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Alright, item ten point four, Asia Fruit Logistics twenty twenty and international relations, this recommendation on page forty three, would any councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the recommendation that the council, number one, note that Greater Shepherd and City Council will not attend Asia Fruit Logistics in twenty twenty and note that officers will continue to focus on business growth through access to international markets.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councillor Patterson, thank you.
I'll second, I'll second.
Thanks, councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I think I've been unmuted instead of.
No, it's working.
Thank you, look, this is obviously a direct impact from COVID nineteen, we don't have a choice here, it's obviously, you know, we can't do that this year, but what we can do is still continue to keep those relationships and those opportunities strong, we've built a lot of effort and a lot of success over the last few trips, particularly our international delegations to China, Hong Kong, Jakarta, myself being on those delegations the past two years, there's certainly success in place, so it's very important as part of our Greater Shepherd and International Engagement Strategy that we continue to, you know, build on those relationships and opportunities for the Greater Shepherd and Region. It is disappointing, you know, it's such, it's such a great opportunity when we're over there, you know, particularly when we went to the Asia Fruit Logistics, big expo there last year and the year before, you know, to really be there lobbying, you know, with our local growers and our local businesses, it was such a great experience, but also a great opportunity, but those opportunities, as I said, have created fantastic relationships, continue of business developing and building and connections, so it's certainly not lost, we'll certainly continue to work very, very hard in this space and support our local industries as much as we can, that's why we go, that's why we, we all get off together, we're very proud when we're there, we're very supportive of what we do, we know we have the best fruit and best produce in the world, so there's definitely still going to be many opportunities for us, it's, it's just a different way of doing things, as we will many things, you know, COVID nineteen, it's changed things, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't stop us from, you know, progressing and still, you know, doing the great things that we do.
Absolutely, thank you so much, councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Patterson?
Yes, it is a shame. It's, a lot of momentum's been built up over the previous few years. And if you speak to some of the auditors that have attended, they can certainly see a great future. And we've been concentrating on Asia for quite a few years and the momentum's there. And it's a shame we can't continue on, but we just cannot do it. But what has, sometimes things happen in funny ways. And the old mother country has left the European market, which has potentially opened up new markets for our old produce. So it'll be interesting with the offices, I know they're, you know, they're right on the ball there and they're, they're making contact with them. And one market might close for one reason and another one might open. So totally confident with our staffs that they'll be, they'll be looking at all the options available. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Does anyone want to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. Speaking to the motion means that we obviously support that Greater Shepparton will not be attending the Asia Fruit Logistics. But that's for the obvious reason that have been outlined by councillors, I keep sorry, and councillor Patterson. But obviously, the point two says the officers will continue to focus on business growth through access to international markets. And yes, there will be some other markets opening up. But that doesn't mean the Asia market is closing down. That's actually more important than ever, that we still focus and concentrate on that region because of the fact there's hundreds and hundreds of millions of potential clients there. The English market, well, yeah, that door may open indeed. Market of potentially sixty odd million people, that should not be snipped at, I suppose. That's got to be chased to a degree as well. But I think you'll find they'll be coming to us sooner than we'll be coming to them in respect to that. But that's a good thing as well. I, I think opportunities abound everywhere. We've got to keep the international engagement at front of mind and keep pursuing it on all fronts, whether that be Asia or Europe or, or the Middle East or anywhere for that matter. So I fully support our continued work in that field. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No, all right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour. Motion carried unopposed. Moving on to our next agenda, item number ten point five, on page forty eight, Adoption of Tullamba Growth Plan twenty twenty. There's a recommendation on page forty eight. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Yes, madam mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page forty eight, which states that the council, one, adopt the Tullamba Growth Plan twenty twenty and the Tullamba Streetscape and Housing Typologies twenty twenty. Two, receive and note the draft Tullamba Growth Plan Conservation Report twenty twenty. And three, authorize the preparation and exhibition of a planning scheme amendment to implement the Tullamba Growth Plan twenty twenty and the Tullamba Streetscape and Housing Typologies twenty twenty into the Greater Shepparton Planning Scheme.
Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson?
I'll second that motion, madam mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. As we all know, Tullambe is a beautiful little town on the west of the Golden River. Has a great population. People there tend to get a lot of things done because they're very active in and have a great community spirit. I urge the residents of Tullambe to have a look at the documents that are going to be exhibited and have their say. Some, some residents in Tullambe, I'm sure, would like to have the little village settlement remain as is. Others are more likely to approve greater development, which in turn would probably lead to things like sewerage coming into the town. Now, I think it's important that all of those members of the Tullambe community have their say so that we as a council can take their opinions into consideration.
Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Patterson?
Yes, can you be corrected? I found it very interesting, I have found it very interesting having conversations with lots of residents from Tullambe. Some certainly wanted to retain the village feel and some wanted their town to expand so they can have sewerage in a better, bigger school, not a better school, bigger school, et cetera, and so their town grow. And I understand completely both aspects of it. I also understand that when I, we sold our building in Rutner, we looked at Tullambe, there was nothing available at all. So, you know, if you want the opportunity to expand, there has to be land there. And this provides land for the next thirty years with several developments. So it'll be a very big development that goes over the next few years. But I, I really do believe that it'll have that village feel still. It's unique that it has, you know, not got a lot of little towns down it. Now it's a pub and it'll have a very good highway access, whether it's an asset or a knife, I think it will be. So, you know, I urge the residents to have a look and make sure they're happy with what is up there. Both street plans and the development itself. And get back to us. Be interesting to see the outcome.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak to the motion? So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour. Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Right, so we'll now go to next item, which is on page fifty five, ten point, item number ten point five, Adoption of Shepparton and Marupna twenty fifty Regional City Growth Plan. Would any councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'd like to move a motion to lay this on the table, madam mayor.
Thank you.
Motion has been moved to second.
Yeah, firstly, after more than seven. Okay, councillor Sutton, my understanding is that we have to first go through the process of moving and seconding this motion. And then we, then there'll be a second stage about the matter that you have raised. So in this regard, I would like to ask any councillor to move a motion. Councillor Jovanetti?
I'd like to move the motion to lay it on the table.
All right, I'll pause for, for a couple of minutes just to get clarification around this process.
So I'm going to move.
Okay councillor Sutton and for, and to everyone else also, we have just clarified that according to local law number two, Procedures for Council Meetings and Council twenty eighteen, section seventy four, laying a motion on the table, it requires a motion to be moved and seconded and, but not put to vote. And at that time, councillor Sutton, if you want, you can raise that matter that you have just raised. So I'll go back to the formal steps. I'm asking for a councillor to move a motion with respect to item number ten point six.
So are you saying I can't move the motion to lay it on the table?
You can, but first that motion has to be moved and then seconded. And while we are debating, then, before the vote is done, then at any point in, during that debate, you can, you can propose to lay this motion on the table. But the motion has to be moved and seconded first, as per my understanding, and my government's team is also agreeing to that. So we'll go back to the, to the process first. Councillor Jovanetti, am I right to understand that you want to move that motion?
Yeah, madam mayor, for the purposes of taking this matter further, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page fifty five, that council receive and note the Shepparton and Marupna twenty fifty Regional City Growth Plan Community Engagement Summary Report and from January twenty twenty. Two, receive and note the Shepparton and Marupna twenty fifty Regional City Growth Plan Background Report from July twenty twenty. Three, adopt the Shepparton and Marupna twenty fifty Regional City Growth Plan. And four, note that council officers will begin preparing a planning scheme amendment to implement the Shepparton and Marupna twenty fifty Regional City Growth Plan into the Greater Shepparton Planning Scheme.
Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson?
Oh, second, second, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanetti, you're on mute? Thank you.
This document has been prepared in consultation with staff and Victorian Planning Authority. Quite a detailed report indicating the areas of residential growth and industrial growth through up to the period twenty fifty. It's probably not, it's probably pointless we're going on much further if there's going to be another motion to, by this particular motion on the table.
Councillor, thank you councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Patterson, do you want to speak to the motion?
No, just that I, you know, have trouble understanding how we can get this eleventh hour. And then all these questions come up. And we've had months, this, it's been going on for years, this piece of, it's a most important document that will cover in our council term, it's the whole future. You know, I, I do support that if some councils aren't happy with all the knowledge, I'm happy to have it left on the table. So I'll, I'll just second it and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? We are now debating and, yes councillor Summer?
Yes, I'm happy with points one and two of that motion, but I don't think it was necessary to move points three and four because there have been some changes. Councillor Patterson is entirely right. This has been going on for a long time and it generally is the eleventh hour when things do come to our attention. We didn't know about the super school until very recently and now we have a super school.
So all this. Can we please stick to the item that is, that we're discussing, which is item ten point six?
Ten point six, Adoption of the Marupna Shepparton Regional Growth Plan. Right, well, I find that relevant because the future land east of Doyle's Road apparently could potentially be rezoned into something different now. Whether that's going to happen or not, whether there's a perfectly reasonable explanation of the processes that have got us to this point. I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are. We'll, we'll talk that through if this does get left on the table. But when ratepayers contact us specifically because they have concerns and it's a document, let's be honest, we're not adopting this in September twenty twenty. It's a long term document and a month or two isn't going to make a big, big difference. So I am against adopting it as it stands without further, further comment.
Okay, thank you councillor Summer. Okay. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Or any other, yes councillor Adam?
Well, madam mayor, to save some time, I'd like to move that we lay this matter on the table.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now.
And madam mayor, may I ask for a point of clarification before you put the vote?
Yeah, sure.
Can I, can I ask councillor Adam what additional information you need out of the organisation over the next period to assist you in this debate? Because you would appreciate there's a number of developers, consultancy businesses, agricultural enterprises that are ready to go and need some clarification and this document provides that. So I just need to know what additional information you require.
Councillor, Mr Peter Harriet, I'll just request you to pause here because now that the motion has been, we do not need, we cannot make any further discussion because the motion has been asked.
It hasn't been put.
Indeed, no, but once, once the motion.
The motion must not, seventy five point three says the motion must not be further discussed or voted on until council resolves to take the motion from.
The motion's only been put, so I didn't have any chance prior to that, you know.
Motion's not further discussed or voted on.
That's, that's effectively after the vote's been taken so that you can't deal with it until it's brought back.
Okay, so you're, you're using this, this opportunity before the vote.
Well, it's just because it's such.
To ask for this clarification?
Such a significant document, as councillor Patterson said, I, I need clarification as to what the councillors need. Now, if we're, I, I did hear comments that we were going to have further discussion with some parties. You would appreciate that if we're going back to some parties, there's a number of people that have had input into this document which we would have to have fair, fair consultation with as well. So I'm just needing clarification so that we can progress this significant document as soon as possible. I think.
Councillor Adam, you are on mute. Do you want to unmute?
Oh, sorry, madam mayor. Can I now speak, madam mayor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Thank you for that, that commentary, Mr Harriet. Now, as councillor Patterson referred to earlier, this is a very important document. This will virtually mark what Shepparton looks like over the next fifty years or so. It's extremely important and I know myself personally and a few other councillors, even though some of this information's been out for quite a while, I say some of the information because really up until three or four weeks ago, my concerns or my focus was on the twenty thirty plan, which contradicts the twenty fifty plan for some particular areas of development, completely, completely contradicted. And that may be due to changing, changing environment, I understand that fully. However, we must be fully knowledgeable about what this contains in its entirety. Because what we vote on now over the next, whether it's tonight or in one month's time, will determine how this place looks. Shepparton traditionally, for whatever reason, is, it's a bit like following the Nile River. We go north and south and stick to the highway now. Present, during briefings over the past month or so, we've been, been told by different organisations and consultants that land to the east of Shepparton, especially land directly opposite east of Doyle's Lane or Doyle's Road, sorry, is prime agricultural land. And yes, it is, there's no doubt about that. But it's no different to land north or south or even the Lemanos area where it's been, there's already obviously a development there concerning, not houses obviously, but a bit of a development out there. That land out there is no more or no less arable than the land that we're talking about opposite Doyle's Road. Yet all the services that connect and that assist developments are right there, sewage, gas and so on. So I don't think enough consideration has been given to, to that particular area. I think we need more time to really look at what the model means and the, the consequences of not moving in that general area. I could go on for minutes, but I don't have the time tonight to talk about Dobson Estate and all the rest of it and making a nice formal sort of area in that region. So I just think we need more time to consider the options and all the alternatives and the net benefit for the community.
Okay councillor Adam, we'll now go to the vote about laying a motion on the table.
Points of clarification.
Sorry councillor Summer, do you want to say something?
I would, just to clarify, my comment about the super school was that it was out near Doyle's Road. So it's perfectly relevant in terms of the conversation, that whether that should be agriculturally zoned or residentially zoned, that could impact the decision. And I'm not sure we've considered that. That's why I mentioned it. It was definitely an irrelevant zone of, of regional plan.
All right, thank you for clarifying this councillor Summer. I'll go back to that, the, that motion that councillor Adam is saying that we lay on the table. So we'll, I'll start from that point. Councillor Keith, do you want to say something?
Yes, you haven't quite finished asking, would anyone else like to speak to the motion? I'd like to speak to it, if that's okay?
Actually, there is no, no, according to the procedure, that according to the procedure that I understand, there is no, uh, debate on this. We are just going straight to the vote for laying a motion on the table. Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll continue with that, uh. All those in favour of laying a motion on the table, on, for laying this motion on the table? Four. Okay, so motion, um, so we have four. So that means that motion is, uh.
Those against.
Is, is, um.
Those against.
Sorry?
Those against.
Oh, we have to ask, yeah, thank you for, um, for clarifying. I'll start again, those who are in favour of laying this motion on the table. Four, those who are against? One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. That's okay, so once again, we are in the, in, um. In that situation where I have to use, uh, my casting board. Look, uh, I, I've heard from, uh, I understand your point of, um, the point of clarification that you had asked, um, Mr Harriet. And I, I, I feel that yes, in the interest of, of getting everything, um, out there and leaving no stone unturned. Uh, let's get the additional information that councillor Adam, uh, and, and others are, are asking for. So in that sense, I am, uh, going to say, I'm going to. To favour this motion to, to be laid on the table, uh, and to be, um, to be heard at the next ordinary council meeting. So in that sense, motion carried. We'll now go to the, to our next, um, item. Which is item ten point seven, Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee Annual Report twenty nineteen. Recommendation is on page sixty-five, would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Council Keith, did I see your hand? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion that the council received and note the Greater Shepparton Heritage Advisory Committee Annual Report twenty nineteen. For the year ended thirty-first December twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Council Keith, do I have a second? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Sutton, do you want to? Do you want to say that, that, can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move that motion, to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, so we're basically just receiving and noting the annual report, the twenty nineteen annual report, um. The committee does provide a critical way of raising awareness of culture heritage issues as well as promoting community participation in cultural heritage issues. Within the municipality, uh, I think it's really important that we continue to work, you know, really well with the committee and, and really help support. Also our community members that often have questions in regard to heritage. Um, but it's a, it's a moving beast and I think it's really important, um, other than the report, that we still, you know, watch this space and work really well together.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just like to say, this is a very, very hardworking, um, committee. And they are doing a lot for the cultural and heritage if, of Shepparton and surrounds. And, um, yep, it's a great report, so happy to read it and happy to, um, let everybody see what they've been doing.
Thank you very much, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We will now go to the vote, uh, those in favour. Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number eleven point one on page sixty-eight. Resolving of the Deacon Reserve Advisory Committee, there's a recommendation on page sixty-eight, would any councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Hazeman?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll move that the council, one, formally acknowledge the contribution of past and current committee members. To the development and successful functioning of Deacon Reserve over many years. Two, formally dissolve the Deacon Reserve Advisory Committee. Three, note that a forum of user groups to provide input will be established in place of the advisory committee.
Thank you, Councillor Hazeman. Uh, any second, uh, Councillor Patterson?
I'll take that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, I've got somewhat mixed feelings about this because this has been, um, the committee that's been in place there for well over twenty years. Has been very, very successful in its oversight of the, the capital redevelopment of Deacon Reserve. If those who've been familiar with the reserve think what it was like a bit over twenty years ago and look at the, the developments that have occurred there, whether it's, um. Yeah, improved fencing, the surface itself and lighting and other capital infrastructure. But sadly, um, a couple of years ago, um, some five of the longest-serving members of the committee decided that it was time for them to depart. Not through any, um, particular issues, just that they'd been there long enough. And after two attempts of advertising to, um, recruit more community members to the committee, that proved to be unsuccessful. And so, um, the, the direction, I'd, I'd have to acknowledge the work that, um, Tim Zach's done here in, in trying to both preserve the committee and recruit new members to it. That wasn't successful, so the, um, the option moving forward for that oversight role at Deacon Reserve. Is going to be a, um, a user forum of the, um, the users of the, of the reserve itself. That wouldn't have been my preferred option because in other places where user groups, uh, the management structure, it often develops into, um. Bested interest, but I'm hopeful that with the work that we'll, we can put in here. And some of the participatory work that these people have put in over the years, we'll be able to get a satisfactory group moving forward.
Thank you, thanks very much, Councillor Hazeman. Councill, Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, I certainly would, I knew it'd be competitive, it'd be a gig in this, because most of us, a lot of us have sat on that committee over a period of years. And it is said that, um, it is, uh, is coming to an end, committee of management. This is the second committee of management I, that I'm aware of that has ceased to exist since I've been a councillor, um. And this is a sign of the times, volunteers are so busy and they're hard to find, so, and the volunteers we've had here, um. Have done a great job, they're very, they have been very possessive and passionate about their job. They've had the Deacon Reserve, um, ground at, at the base of their decisions all the time. Uh, it hasn't always been easy with sporting clubs pushing to have current training there when they know it shouldn't be, it should be rested, et cetera. So it hasn't even been all that easy in the job, but, uh, they've done a terrific job and, um, I, I don't want to mention names. Cause I know I'll miss a few, but some of those guys have been on that committee for a long time. Um, I'll just be a little bit dangerous here and go, Don Gilke has been, Don Gilke has been there for an enormous amount of time. Um, and having said that, I apologise to someone else that's been here as long, or long, but I can't recall. Um, but Don has been here a long time since, um, since start of life. Um, so yeah, it is sad, but, um, let's move on, we've got, uh, we've got some good staff and. There is still a users group to be represented on this to look after and maintain it and, and push it along.
Thank you very much, thank you, Councillor Patterson. Uh, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, look, I'd just like to, uh, concur with what councillor Hazelman, councillor Patterson have said. Having been, uh, on the Deacon Reserve Committee for the last four years and had involvement, uh, with it since its inception. I'd have to say it's been one of the most, uh, successful section eighty-six committees that councillors had. As councillor Hazelman has indicated, the amount of work that's been done there to improve the ground is, is fantastic. I also, uh, would like to thank all of those committee members that have been on it. Uh, I won't know names because, uh, there are too many people. Um, I'd also like to congratulate Tim Zach and his staff for their ability to maintain that oval in tipco, tip-top condition. Um, and it's only going to improve now that we've received some funding to, uh, have a new, uh, netball court installed. So overall, congratulations to everybody who's been associated with the, with that, uh, Deacon Reserve Committee, I think they've done a fantastic job.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, uh, Councillor Adam, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, look, I think it's important to note that even though this committee's been dissolved, there's still be representation by the users, users of the facility. With regular meetings and there'll be an avenue for them to, uh, funnel their concerns or suggestions back to council via that, those user group meetings. So it's a, in a sense, a de facto, uh, um, advisory committee, but not, not formally noted as such.
Thank you very much, Councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Now, all right, so we'll now go to the vote, those in, those in favour. Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item number eleven point two on page seventy-one. Award of Contract two zero two nine Aqua Moves twenty-five metre indoor pool tile renewal. There's a recommendation on page seventy-one, would anyone please move a motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation that's on page seventy-one. Um, that states that the council accept the tenders by On Time Developments Proprietary Limited. Of unit three twenty-one Cook Road, Mitchum, Victoria, for contract number two oh two nine for the Aqua Moves twenty-five metre indoor pool tile renewal. For a lump sum price of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And we authorize the CEO to sign and seal the contract documents.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanetti, do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Jovanetti, do, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, very briefly, Madam Mayor, uh, look, we've, as councillors, we've seen photos of, uh, the, uh, issues surrounding the, uh, outdoor pool. Uh, it certainly needs the work done to it and I don't think there's any doubt about that. And the sooner we can get that done, the sooner the, uh, kids of Shepparton can start to use that pool, hopefully, uh, during our coming summer.
Thank you very much, Councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just to add, look, it's, it's a lot of money and, uh. I'm sure that we've been through the correct process, no doubt, procurement policy, we've, we've decided that this company, uh, stacks up the best, so I wish them luck and, uh. I hope the job comes out as well as we expected it to come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour. Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Moving on to our next item. It's on page seventy-five, eleven point three, award of contract two zero one one sealed road stabilisation. There's a recommendation on page seventy-five, would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Keith?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation as a motion on page seventy-five. That the council, number one, accept the tender submitted by Sablewix Construction C two I Limited. For contract number twenty eleven for supply and delivery of sealed road stabilisation. Number two, note that the contract term is two years with an option for a two-year and one-year extension, so that brings it to a two plus two plus one. For a total estimated expenditure under the contract over five years of eight hundred, that's sorry, eight million, two hundred and fifty thousand inclusive of GST. Authorise the chief executive officer to sign and seal the contract documents. Authorise the chief executive officer to award the optional contract extension periods where satisfactory performance has been demonstrated.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. And a second, please? Councillor Summer?
Happy to second that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, it's fairly straightforward, I mean, this contract is for the provision of sealed road stabilisation works within the Greater Shepparton Municipality, so very important works. Stabilisation works are predominantly used for council's roads resealing programme, major surface treatment programme and road maintenance where required.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. Uh, Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, roads, rates and rubbish, sort of the workhorse of council activity often goes unrewarded. It's, um, it is quite a lot of money, over eight million dollars in, in this, um, recommendation. So, um, contrary to popular opinion, we do put quite a lot of effort and resources into maintaining our roads. Um, I think the issue might be the amount of ratepayers per capita per road. Works out that there's less ratepayers paying for more roads being in a regional area. So it can end up quite a expensive flow-on for ratepayers, but this is the sort of thing I think they want us to do. And they want us to be seen doing, we should be out there fixing roads, so, um, I fully support this.
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Would any councillor want, uh, want to speak against the motion? Okay, would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, look, I support this motion, obviously. I just think it's interesting to note that we've gone from a, uh, a two-panel or two-company, uh, panel to a single supplier in this contract. Um, which can present a bit of a concern, I also think potentially. Uh, but there's a recommendation that a property officer will be appointed as well to oversee this procurement, to minimise any potential concerns around this change. I was a bit concerned about the fact we're putting a property officer in place, because we have concerns about having one supplier. But, um, I have faith in the decision-makers on that one, but I thought it was worth noting that that was a concern.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Uh, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, Councillor Patterson?
Um, yes, we're quite impressed the way councillor Summer explained the, um, the regional road situation, because we do pop up a lot of plaque. Um, it should be noted, the, um, the contract is two by two, two years by two years option with another extension of one year. So it is over five years at eight million dollars, so there's a considerable amount of time, but, um, yeah, there's a lot of road works to be done. There's a lot about that, unfortunately, well, fortunately, a wet winter always brings on a lot more road work, et cetera, so it's a busy year for roads.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No, all right, so we'll now go to the vote, those in favour. Okay, the motion, motion carried, unopposed. Next, we are on page seventy-nine, item twelve point one, councillor activities twelve point. Uh, twelve point one point one, councillor activity report, June twenty twenty. There's a recommendation on page seventy-nine. Would any councillor please move a motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to move the motion on, um, that the summary of the council's community interaction and briefing programme be received and recorded for assemblies of councils be noted.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton, and a second, please. Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that recommendation, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, not really.
Thank you. Councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, we can see, uh, now the list of community interaction has shortened, which is to be expected with the COVID, um, environment that we're all living with at the moment. I think it is, you know, definitely worth noting, many of us sit on some of these committees, I sit on some of these committees. And we've been doing our Zoom meeting and contacting with our committee members, contacting with community. Cause we have a lot of community volunteers that actually sit on some of these committees as well. I think it's an important time, you know, to really stop and think about people's mental health and, um, interacting with each other is really important. Face to face is always better, as we know, and I think we're all starting to adapt to this new world of Zoom. But, um, you know, I'm really impressed, um, particularly with, you know, a lot of my friends, a lot of the staff through council, you know, everyone that's really trying their best. To, you know, really work through this new, um, environment, I have family in Melbourne, I have a daughter in Melbourne. You know, it's very difficult, this whole, you know, change that we're living, but what I'm really trying to say is that it's so important that we look out for each other, we continue those conversations. Even when we're having our committee meetings, making sure, you know, everyone is okay. I sit on the women's, um, charter and it's, you know, it's great to hear that those people are, you know, always looking out for each other. You know, checking in on, you know, other people that they know. So I really encourage everyone, you know, when they're sitting on these committee meetings to look outside, you know, what they're doing, just to make sure that everyone is coping okay. Working from home can really have its challenges. And, you know, as I say, hats off to particularly our council and council staff. They're all, you know, faced with many challenges, but I think, you know, we're all feeling it tonight when we look at that list, which would normally be more than a page and a half long. It's, you know, it's decreasing. So the community interaction, you know, is, it's difficult, but we can react, we can interact in a different way and we are. But the main message is make sure that we watch out for each other and make sure that, you know, mental health is a big issue. People need support, they get it. At the end of each meeting, I always, you know, remind people, make sure they're okay. If not, there's certainly, you know, someone to reach out to. So I hope everyone's going okay out there. It's a changing world, but, you know, we'll all get through it. Time will pass, but support is there and I'm certainly support, support that to happen.
Thank you, councillor Keane. All right, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Okay, motion carried, unopposed. Moving on to our next agenda item on page eighty one, twelve point two point one, Murray Darling Association, there's a report by councillor Patterson. And there's a recommendation on page eighty two. So would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Yes, madam mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation and that is, note councillor Patterson's report on the Murray Darling Basin Association.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute, councillor Jovanetti?
Just like to congratulate councillor Patterson on the work he's put into the report. Very well worded. I think that the work councillor Patterson does on behalf of the, all of the municipalities in Region Two of Murray Darling Basin is, we should all be thankful for. We certainly hope that the recommendations coming from his report can be acted upon and that we can, at some point forestow that four hundred and fifty gigaliter buyback.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Clarification, is this report for noting or for discussion?
For noting.
Okay.
Okay, councillor Adam?
Thank you. I'll continue on noting the report. Yes, I'd like to follow on from councillor Jovanetti's comments. It was a good report. And councillor Patterson's obviously been fairly actively involved in this for quite a while. I think all councillors understand how important this issue is, along with many others, but this is one of the key issues of our whole region. And I know that councillor Patterson is very passionate about it and he's on top of the situation and I'd like to applaud his good work and wish him the best continuing on expressing our opinions within that, within that forum. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. I thought it was important to put this up just to show especially our rural rate payers the support the council put behind it. This is very important. It's basically what we've been working towards the last eighteen months are these two recommendations. They come from the Region Two Board, which our council is responsible for and I chair that committee. And it's made up of Meebworth River Council, Buryhamshire Council, Moira and Shire Council and the Federation Council and Greater Shepparton. We had board meeting come up with these two motions we felt were very important. And they've since gone back to their own councils and they've gone through a council resolution. And now they've gone to the Murray Darling Association to be heard at the AGM, which was to be held in Shepparton. But will now held virtually online with Shepparton, the host council in September. The first motion quickly deals with the four fifty gigs that's on the table for environmental buybacks. The Golden, and that's across the whole two basins, southern north basin. Golden and Murray Water is the most reliable water you can get. There's nowhere else in the Murray Darling Basin. It has a more constant supply of water. If the four fifty gigs is to come out, there's a fair chance it will come out in this area. So to give you a frightening statistic, the whole GMID, the Gold Murray Irrigation District last year used five hundred gigs, right? So that's supported every factory, SBCA, all their dairies right now, round and through Karang up through the Murray, five hundred gigs in total and potentially is to lose four fifty. So we're putting it up there that unless you, there is a a policy that you can defend the buyback of water without having an environmental impact or a commercial impact on your community, that can't happen. The second motion deals with the excessive flows from Minna Valley Transfers that have gone down the Golden the last few years and also the Barma Cho. Both of those rivers are receiving immense damage and that is to restrict the flows. The Barma Cho is an easy one to describe because it's gone from eleven half thousand megs a day capacity to under ten thousand, right? And the frightening fact is there, the almond industry will tell you they need ten thousand megs a day to survive. So how in the hell is anyone else going to get water through the Barma Cho? So it is serious. It's coming to a head, but I'm very happy with the motions that have gone up. Hopefully we will have some success and whilst a successful motion would be great, it doesn't mean it'll happen, of course, but the Murray Darling Association has never had a history of putting up motions that have an impact on the base.
Your three minutes are over. Do you want an extension?
I'm right, thanks. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Now, I'll ask again, would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Summer?
Well done, councillor Patterson. This has been talking about this for so long. It's actually gotten through my thick head. I think the assumption is more water equals more environmental thriving, which isn't actually true at all. And this, this report is really succinct. It's easy to read. Anyone could pick it up and understand what it's saying. Basically, in a nutshell, environmental damage is currently occurring due to high unseasonable water flows. So it's not the case that more water equals more life. It's actually ruining breeding grounds and destroying the banks of the river, which is causing overflow and flooding because the river's getting shallower, a whole bunch of issues there which I haven't thought about before. And the impact on the farmers is devastating, especially with the almonds. So that's definitely a local government issue. And I think you've done a magnificent job in communicating something that's quite simple, but come across as usually complex. So congratulations.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just like to say congratulations to Dennis. Well done and keep up the good work. We're behind you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Okay, councillor, I think we have, everybody has spoken except councillor Hazelman. Do you want to speak to the motion now? All right. I would just, again, I would agree with everyone else. Thanking, thanks to you, councillor Patterson, your passion and dedication and amazing work that you are doing. And this report has definitely helped us understand this problem in a, in a better way with a simple to understand language. So thank you very much for that work. With that, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. All right, page number eighty three. Under item number twelve point three, notice of motion, we have twelve point three point one, notice of motion, three dash two zero two zero LGBTI plus advisory committee. Author is councillor Summer. Councillor Summer, you have given notice that you will want to move this motion to, could you please read out this motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Fairly simple. That the motion, one, prepare a report outlining the policy, financial and resourcing implications of establishing an LGBTI plus advisory committee. And that should read two, not three. Provide the report not later than the August council meeting twenty twenty.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to support that motion, second that motion, sorry, and support it.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. And thank you councillor Adam for your second. It's near the end of our term, so I consider this to be just a bit of loose ends housekeeping. We already have had this in the pipeline for a very long time, but it's never been ratified officially at a meeting before. And coming into a new term, I just don't want all the hard work to be thrown, the baby thrown out with the bathwater, so to speak. I want this to continue so that we can establish a committee. We've been in discussion about this since marriage equality and that was last term. Now, I know things take time, but I'm hoping this might expedite it a little. We do have full support from the leaders of the Pride Group. I have spoken to them and they're very supportive of this and that's always a good thing, consulting. It's not a fly by night motion. I've put considerable thought into this, put motions up before and withdrawn them. So this time I'm not withdrawing them. I just want this to be officially there as something that we intend to do. I've written academic reports as part of a diploma in primary care nursing on on the inequalities and social determinants around LGBTI community. And I did want to include one of those as point two in my motion, but that was rejected. I'm still unclear about what grounds that was rejected on, but anyway, it would have gone over everyone's head probably. It was nowhere near as good as councillor Patterson's very clear report. It was, yeah, so it just mentions suicide rates, mental health problems, just the kind of language we use and how that can impact on someone, family structures.
Councillor Summer, would you like to, I'm just looking at the two points and could you sort of elaborate on those points about the committee and, and that the report should be available no later than the August council meeting, those two points that are in your notice of motion? Do you want to elaborate on those rather than the ones that has not been included?
I'm not sure how to proceed with why I'd want to report if I don't discuss the social determinants behind the disadvantage of an LGBTI community. You can scratch out any mention of an essay if you like, but the point still stands, all that's relevant. I mean.
I'm just mindful of time, so if you could elaborate more on these two points, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Again, I'm not sure how to elaborate if I can't refer back. Okay, I will leave it at that. I think councillors know where I'm coming from and we'll put it to the vote.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. Look, this is, has been a long time coming, as councillor Summer alluded to. I think it would have happened anyway, but moving this motion just hurries it up a little bit, I suppose. We're a diverse community in Greater Shepparton, obviously an LGBT, LGBTI community is a, is a huge part of our community and very valued. So I think this is just a logical step. Probably should have happened earlier, we know that. This way we can have a great conduit into their concerns, any issues they may have. I think it's always good to have an engagement with all our community and this just helps us move along in harmony together. So I fully support it.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like, councillor Patterson, do you want to speak against or for?
Look, I will speak against it and I'm not against motions such. I should have done something earlier with the amendment. I certainly support number one, just a timeframe. I think by the time we, we're dealing with volunteers here and we're going to put a restriction of one month on it to get that timeframe. I would love someone, I could have done it myself, or put it under self, to move amendment just to remove that second part of it, put the timeframe on.
Are you proposing an amendment?
Yeah.
Or you are just making a comment?
I'm just making a comment now.
Okay, all right.
That's my, that's my concern. There's a time limit on it. I, I just think we're putting pressure on people when we don't need to, both the community and ourselves and council officers.
Okay. Councillor Adam, do you have any point of clarification or?
Just a point of clarification, thank you, madam mayor. Point of clarification. I mean, this motion is preparing a report, not actually forming the actual advisory committee. So I would have thought a month's too long to have prepared financial and resourcing implications. Seeing as we've got numerous advisory committees and I would think there's a template out there and this is just a matter of inserting the different people's names and the different resources potentially. But I don't think it's a great time consuming. I could be wrong, but I'm thinking it's a bit of a template that you just add different ingredients to basically. That's just my thoughts, but anyway.
Thank you. Okay. All right, okay. So this was point of clarification. I guess point of clarification, according to the procedures can, should wait until the end of this debate. But I accepted on this point, at this point in time, on this occasion. All right, I'll go back to our normal proceedings now. Anyone who wants to speak for the motion? Councillor Keane?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just like to point out that, yeah, an advisory committee is very, very important, you know, for council to have the information we need to run this type of united, you know, local community invested engagement. So well done councillor Summer for putting it up. I have a lot to do with GB Pride and a lot of the members there have been very involved over the last few years and very, very proud of the work that is done. So I think an advisory committee that we can do things better within our community and council being involved in that is a very positive step. So definitely support it.
Thank you, councillor Keane. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Madam mayor, just saying, just about to say thank you to Fern for bringing it up. You've done really well. I know you've been talking about it for a long, long time. So it's good to see the motion finally here, so we can now vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? To the motion, councillor Hazelman?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, I'm fully of supporting of the work that's going to be done here. But we need to be specific what it is doing. It's going to outline the policy, financial and resource implications of establishing this committee. It doesn't say we're going to establish that committee, which I certainly hope we do. That's another discussion for another time. So I'm not too sure what's actually being achieved here. I would have thought that the CEO and his staff could produce that policy, financial and resourcing implications in about five minutes flat. There's nothing involved. So to a certain extent, this is, this is largely symbolic. The real work that needs to go on, and I understand is going on between council staff and GB Pride, is looking at the, the ramifications and the serious components of establishing a committee. Issues around the terms of reference and membership. They're the serious stuff that the council is going to need to address. Not the bit of, as I said, the symbolism of this. It's fantastic. It's moving in the right direction. But let's not get too carried away with what this is achieving.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Hazelman. With that, I think we have covered everyone. So we have councillor Patterson spoke against, so that means I'll give a right of reply to councillor Summer.
Thank you very much, madam mayor, and thank you to the people who supported this. It, it is a bit of fluff really. And the thing is, ironically, I was following at the time proposed governance laws that said councillors need to have a report outlining the policy, financial and resourcing requirements before actually moving a motion on something. So this was preliminary and I'm glad there's work being done in the background. But as far as I could interpret those governance rules, that's, this is, this is what we're limited to. We have to do this before we can get any further. So I believe that we're still in discussions about whether that was required or not. and it may have even been taken out prior to the draft being released, which I hope it has. So all of you had great points. Yeah, I'm just going to take it to the vote before I say something wrong and it may not get through. Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, on page eighty-four, item thirteen, we have documents for signing and sealing, item eighteen point one. The Greater Shepparton Council and Museum of Vehicle Evolution Move Department Funding Osbys Agreement. There's a recommendation on page eighty-four. Would any councillor please move a motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thanks very much. I'd like to move the recommendation on page eighty-four, which states that the council authorizes the CEO to sign and seal the Greater Shepparton Council and Museum of Vehicle Evolution and Department of Funding Agreement.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Do I have a second? Councillor Summer?
Very happy to second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, look, I'll only be brief. But it's great that the state government has contributed another $900,000 to this particular project, which we know will be a significant tourist attraction here in Shepparton. The purpose of this motion is to allow the state government to give us the money to give to the MOVE organisation. We're only auspicing that $900,000, in other words, we just take it in one hand and hand it over with the other.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it's going to be fantastic for the region and I can't wait to take my kids.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add that it's very exciting to see this coming to the fruition that it is. I remember the very early conversations and the reality that, no, how can we make this happen? So I'd just, yeah, I'd like to acknowledge, you know, all the team involved behind MOVE and their vision and the community behind it as well. It's going to have a lot of history telling there. We have some incredible stories to be told within our trucks and our transport. So, yeah, I think it's an exciting, you know, national, you know, event that's going to happen here eventually of opening this fantastic, you know, museum. So well done to all involved and really looking forward to seeing, you know, what we can do with this economically for our community when we can. I know it's going to be a massive attraction and something we're all going to be very, very proud of, you know, once it is opened and up and running. So, yeah, well done.
Thank you, councillor Keith. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No, all right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. We'll now move on to page eighty-five, next item, urgent, number fourteen, urgent business, not included on the agenda? Yes, councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to please bring up the Free Off-Street Parking Initiative that we rolled out on the thirteenth of July. I wish to acknowledge that there is confusion around the Fraser Street Car Park, whether it being an on-street or an off-street car park, which was brought to my attention on Monday and has caused stress and confusion amongst the business community, which needs to be addressed immediately. The Chamber of Commerce, some members of the Parking Reference Group and some councillors also considered the Fraser Street Car Park an off-street car park. As per the information was on our website up until recently, which has been acknowledged as a mistake. But, you know, me myself, I actually was under the impression it was an off-street car park. So I ask a report be prepared for this car park to be included in the free parking initiative and brought back to councillors at the August council meeting.
So just to clearly understand, councillor Keith, your urgent business matter is to prepare a report and bring it back to council meeting regarding Fraser Street Car Park? You're on mute?
To be included.
Did I understand it right?
Yes, to be included as a free car park.
A report or a decision on, I just want to clarify, did you, you mentioned report. Do you want to bring, do you want council to bring a report on this Fraser Street to be included as a free car park?
We are going to need a report because we are going to do some of the cost implications and we're going to need a little bit more information. So just a report on bringing it to council laws to include it in the free parking.
Councillor Hazelman, yes, you?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I hate to be the process policeman yet again, but there really needs to be two motions here. The first, I think councillor O'Keefe is arguing in support of what would be a substantive motion. The first motion needs to be that the council considers the item as urgent business. Once we agree to that, then the second motion would be the substantive motion that we'll all talk to.
Thank you for clarifying, councillor Hazelman, and that's what I was trying to speak from councillor Keith. We go a step back, so your urgent business is about a matter that, so the two conditions for urgent business matter include, number one, that the matter relates to or it arises out of a matter which has arisen since distribution of the agenda. And it cannot save, and the second condition is that it cannot safely or conveniently be deferred until the next ordinary meeting. So if the matter is that, that is the matter is about Fraser Street Car Park not being included in the, in the off-street car park, what I would like to clarify and say is that it is a matter that is, that did not arise since the printing of July ordinary council meeting agenda. The matter that Fraser Street Car Park is not included in council-owned off-street car park in the CBD is based on council's decision that was taken in the April ordinary council meeting. And not being aware of this until after the printing of this agenda does not change the council report or the, or the information on the basis of which this decision in April council meeting was made. Therefore, I, and the matter, it is a matter, it's a different matter that, which councillor Hazelman has pointed out. And so I believe that this matter is not important. This matter about not being aware of this is not the off-street car park. It is a separate matter altogether, which is asking for basically making Fraser Street Car Parks free and timed. So on the basis of strictly going by the basis of, by the two criterion for urgent business matter, I believe this matter is not urgent and, but this is only the matter about your not being aware of this decision. And as councillor Hazelman has rightly pointed out, a separate matter is a bigger matter which can be discussed and which can be, you know, which can be taken to the next ordinary council meeting. But purely on the basis of not being aware of this decision, I believe this is not urgent business matter. That's how I would understand, but.
You've just got to adjudicate the urgent business matter, Madam Mayor, under thirty-one one and thirty-one two. And that's it. I mean, if you agree to accept it, it then follows councillor Hazelman's point that you need the councillors to support that as well. But the initial point is for you to make the adjudication.
So the adjudication around whether it is an urgent business matter about not being aware and that's, that is not an urgent matter? Yes, councillor Keith?
Could I just have a point of clarification? I do think it's an urgent matter because there's confusion amongst the community and I think we need to clarify what that confusion is and how it's come about. And not only council laws, the reference group, the chamber, they were all, many of them are under the impression this was an off-street car park. So, all right, perhaps we'll just look at it, putting it up as a second.
Councillor Keith, there are two matters and that's why I'm trying to clarify, two matters. The matter that you were not aware, I'm focusing on that, and that's what I have understood, that you were not aware that decision was made. That matter is not urgent because it does not arise, it did not arise after the agenda was printed. It was there from the day one, that's the understanding. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to add to this one? If I have, you're on mute?
Yes, I am. If I can, I think we're arguing over nothing because the substantive notion, as I understood from councillor O'Keefe, was to seek a report at the August meeting. So whether it's urgent business or not, that report's going to get produced, I'd imagine. I think the CEO's got the, got the gist of what's going on and would react accordingly.
Yeah, that's, that's true. So that matter is different and it is being, it is under process. It is, so on the basis of that, I would just stick to this, that this particular one is not urgent business matter and doesn't mean, it does not need a discussion under urgent business matter. Yes, councillor Summer?
I'm so sorry, but I'd have to dissent from the ruling of the chair on this one. I think if you're not aware of something and it comes to your attention after the fact, that indeed it's probably even more urgent in terms of trying to sort it out quickly. So absolutely urgent business and I find that astonishing as a reason not to accept it.
Okay, point taken, but because it's the, it's the chair's role to decide, to get further, to move forward, to move further on this one, I'm saying that this is not an urgent business matter. However, the matter around. So this is not an urgent business measure, but, yeah. However, the matter regarding this Fraser Street, whether it's, whether it should be made a free or not, it's a separate matter which is being progressed, which is being discussed, as we all know, and it can be discussed in our next meeting. So with that, I would like to close this matter and move on to item number fifteen, which is confidential management reports, item fifteen point one, designation of confidentiality of information report attachments. There's a recommendation on page eighty-five. Would any councillor please like to move a motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the motion on page eighty-five. Do you want me to read it out?
If you like.
In accordance with section, within, in accordance with section seventy-seven two B of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine, the council designates as confidential all documents used to prepare the following agenda items, previously designated by the chief executive officer in writing as confidential under section seventy-seven two C of the Act. Report eleven point two, Aquamaroo's twenty-five metre indoor pool tile renewal. This report relates to a contractual matter which is relevant ground applying under section eighty-nine two D of the Act. Report eleven point three, award of contract two, two zero one one, sealed road stabilisation. This report relates to a contractual matter which is a relevant ground applying under section eighty-nine two D of the Act.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Councillor Jovanetti?
I'm happy to second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute?
No, thank you.
Okay, and councillor Jovanetti?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? No, okay. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. With now, we'll close this meeting and I declare the meeting closed at seven thirty-three PM. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, and stay safe.